Welcome, everybody, tonight to the Liberty Council PTA School Board Forum. We have five candidates that are running for two, three-year terms. The candidates as filed are Scott Connor, Andrew Rothman, Bruce Cantwell, Jim Freed, and Mike Capria. Bruce Cantwell is not here with us this evening. The election is on April the 2nd, and your last day to register to vote, if you're not a registered voter, is March 6th. Here with us tonight is Dylan McCloskey from Liberty North High School, and he's going to explain how the format is going to run this evening.
Okay, we're going to be using the three-tap system. So, we're going to tap once when there's one minute left, twice when there's 30 seconds, and three times when your time has elapsed. Two minutes for your intro, and two minutes for your answers, and a two-minute conclusion at the end. So, without further ado, we're going to get started, and we'll start with our intro, and we'll start with Mr. Connor.
Okay. My name's Scott Connor, and I'm running for my second term on the board. First, before I get started, I do want to thank the PTA for doing this. I know it takes a lot of work to set this up each year, and we appreciate the opportunity to come speak for the public, for the community. I've been on the board now for three, about three and a half years. I was appointed in 2009 to an open seat, and then elected in 2010. Was Vice President of the Board for a couple of years, and currently serving as President of the Board. I have six kids. We have a big family, from age 30 down to twins who are 12. As of this morning, I have two grandkids. My second grandchild was born about 12 hours ago, and my second-oldest daughter called tonight, and we got to hear the heartbeat for the first time for her and her husband, who are expecting in September. So, it's kind of a wild, wild time at our house right now. I am very bullish on this school district. I think we've made a lot of progress in the last three years, really, the last three to five years, with the way we manage our finances and what we're doing in the classroom. So, we'll get into a lot of that detail later, but as of right now, we are, we are at an all-time high in our ACT scores. Our financial audits are in order. In fact, I think the, I'm going to read this, the Liberty Tribune had a headline a couple of months ago that said, "School Reserves Rebound in Positive Audit Report: District Finances Strengthen Over Past Five Years." Was that two or three?
It was two.
Okay. So, I'm very bullish on where we're headed. I think we're on the right track. We have a lot of work to do, to continue to do, to keep this thing on track, but I think we're in a very good place. We have a lot of good momentum in our district right now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Connor, and we'll now go to Mr. Rothman.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to participate tonight. My name is Andy Rothman. I'm an attorney. I have a solo practice right here on the square in Liberty. I've been a resident of the Liberty School District since 1998. My wife Heather and I have been married for 17 years, and we have two daughters. Chloe's a fifth grader at Lewis &amp; Clark Elementary, and Avery is a second grader at Lewis &amp; Clark Elementary. I'm excited for the opportunity to run for a first term on the Board of Directors for the Liberty School District. My background is that I have a bachelor's degree in psychology from Truman State University, and my law degree is from University of Missouri, Kansas City. Currently, I serve on the Board of Directors for McLotto Manor, the Board of Directors of the Transitions Family Visitation Program, and I'm also a member of the Liberty Area Chamber of Commerce. My past involvement in the community includes volunteering for coaching positions with various Parks and Rec teams, such as soccer and T-ball. I have also served on the Clay County Bar Association Board of Directors, including as their president. In the school, I have participated both as a member of the PTA and also in the watchdog program. I typically serve one to two school days a year at the school in that program. And, you know, basically, I'm just excited in the direction that the district is headed. We also know that it wouldn't take much for the district to get headed in the wrong direction, and I believe that I am the right person to join the rest of the board members to make sure that everything continues in the correct direction.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rothman, and we'll now move on to Mr. Freed.
Hi, good evening. Well, I want to thank the Debate Club for putting up with us, and PTA for putting this on. My name is Jim Freed. I have two children in the school district. My daughter Elisa's with me tonight. She's a freshman, and my daughter, my son Jimmy is a sixth grader, and they've been in the LPS since K, so they've been here a long time. Like my colleagues here, there are some great things going on in our school district. One of those great things is that when we have an election, there's a large number of people who come out and run for the office. It shows that, as a community, we are committed to our schools and our children, and because, for the most part, this is not a paid position. I think they pay mileage, go to a meeting once in a while, but you, you spend your time and your money running for a non-paid job, and that's how important this is in our community. I didn't grow up in Missouri or in the Liberty District. I grew up in Illinois, and a bit later, I'll probably explain to you why I am passionate about schooling and about being on the school board. And I'm waiting to hear a tap. I haven't heard any taps yet. One, okay. Our district has struggled, but like Scott said, we are on the rebound, and there are many reasons for that. Most of those reasons are here in this room. I have been to school board forums where nobody showed up from the community except for the candidates, and I've seen elections, like the one we're going to have, where very few people came out and voted, and in those cases, those were school districts that were really struggling because the community had kind of given up on them. So, I think this is a great opportunity. I am so thankful to be in the Liberty School District and be running for this office.
Thank you, Mr. Freed, and Mr. Capri, Capria, sorry.
Capria.
Capria, okay.
Thank you, Dylan. My name is Mike Capria. I am a self-employed real estate broker and appraiser. I live here in the Liberty School District. I have lived here for seven years with my wife and a third-grade son at Liberty Oaks. I became interested in running for this position, both because, obviously, we have a personal interest with my son being in the school district, as well as being an appraiser, the amount of our real estate taxes that goes supporting the school district. I think I pretty much concur with what I've heard up here and what I've learned since I started to run for this position. We have an excellent school district. It does need oversight and supervision, and it does face challenges coming down the road, but currently, it is in very good hands, and I just am running for this position to hopefully keep a steady hand on the helm and see it on its way down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Capria, and we will now move into questions. I will repeat the questions twice, just so you guys get it, and then we'll start, and we will again get two minutes for questions. The first question is, are you a member of the PTA? And if so, when did you become a member? Again, are you a member of the PTA? And if so, when did you become a member? And we'll start with Mr. Connor. Mr. Connor?
I am a PTA member and a PTSA member at the current junior-high level. Next year, my son will be a sophomore, but right now, he's a junior, he's a freshman. I've been a PTA member as long as I can remember. I honestly don't know when that started, but I've had kids, this is the first year in a long time that I haven't had a child in elementary school, as they're all getting a little older, but I've been a PTA member for many years, and try to stay active, and I think last year was a member of every PTA in Liberty, and this year, at least two schools, not three.
Okay, and Mr. Rothman?
Yes, I am a member of the Lewis &amp; Clark Elementary PTA, and my wife and I have been members since our older daughter Chloe began kindergarten in 2007.
Okay, Mr. Freed?
I've been a PTA member since Elisa was in kindergarten, so it's been nine years, 10 years, 10 years. And I'm a member of both schools where my children are now, so it's been almost as long as I can remember, too, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Freed, and Mr. Capria.
No, to break the trend, I am not a member of the PTA.
Okay, thank you. Now, we will move to our second question. What makes you passionate about the success of Liberty Public Schools? And again, that's what makes you passionate about the success of Liberty Public Schools? And this time, we'll start with Mr. Rothman.
I believe that everything within a community is interrelated, and the quality of the education that we provide to our children is one of the most important elements. So, not only do I want my own children to succeed, but it benefits the entire community for all the children in the community to succeed. It leads to greater things for the community, such as, you know, you can attract businesses and industry to your community, which can help your tax base. What I have learned from this process, when I have met with neighbors or other administrators, principals, is that Liberty has this long tradition of a strong educational system, and what it's done is it's attracted people who have gone through the, through the school system here. They may leave for four years of college, but they come back to the community, and there's just this, this tradition here that needs to continue. I mean, it's, it's a core value to the community, and many teachers have left, they get their education, they move back to the area, and they teach within our schools. In my neighborhood alone, there's, there's at least three or four families that have owned the same house multi-generational, generationally now, and I want that to continue, and I think that it just benefits, not only personally, obviously, with my own children, but it benefits everyone.
Mr. Freed?
To tell that story, I want to pose a question that happened at the last forum. Lady during the open session asked, "What can we do to identify those children who are not college material and get them into a vocational program so that they can get a job when they get out of high school?" And I took great exception to that, and I'm passionate about this, because I was one of those kids who was labeled as not college material and steered into a vocational program. And I graduated first in my class in vocational auto mechanics, and then I promptly got drafted. Now, in 1970, if you got drafted, you were either going to go in the Army for 18 months or you were going to go somewhere else. I started looking at the Navy. They gave me a placement exam called the ASVAP exam, and I miraculously scored very high on it, and they offered me a nuclear power program. And so, I signed up for six years, and I went into the nuclear power program. Struggling in nuclear power school, because they take you through about two years of college in six months. Trigonometry, advanced physics, nuclear theory, heat transfer, fluid flow. The course is worth about 65 credit hours of college credit if you graduate. And so, I was struggling, went to a counselor, and I said to the counselor, "You know, I'm not going to make this. I'm not college material." And he looked me in the eye, and he said, "You wouldn't be here if we didn't think you could do this." Well, I graduated from that program. I went on to get a bachelor's degree and a master's degree, and I managed not to go to my hometown and look at those counselors and say, "Look, you were wrong. Folks, we can't look at a 13-year-old kid and decide if they're college material or not. What we've got to do is find out what their passion is and steer them into a vocation that they're passionate about, and then they'll be highly successful."
Mr. Capria?
Yes, I'm passionate, so to speak, about the position for two reasons. As I mentioned, obviously, personally, I have a son in the school district, so I want him to go to the best possible schools, which I think we have excellent schools. And as mentioned, the stronger the school system, the better the community is overall, and the better values are for our overall housing stock and the community and businesses.
And finally, Mr. Connor?
You know, I think the most, the thing that makes me the most passionate about this school district in particular is the future, and I've, I've been a part of the district for the last three years, and I can clearly see where we are headed. We have a strategy for, and we can get into some of the detail at some point with these other questions, but we have a real direction with our district right now. We've cleaned some things up, and the future is very bright. We are not as wealthy property-wise as some other districts in the state. Districts all over the country are dealing with financial challenges. I think we are on the forefront of leading the effort to become more efficient and more innovative in the way we do business, and that's what makes me the most passionate. We're, we're changing how we educate, and we're modifying and evolving in the way we do education in Liberty. And being on the front of that, being on the leading edge of that change, is what gets me excited about this role, and passionate about LPS.
Okay, thank you. We will now move to our next question, which is, what made you decide to run for the Board of Education? Again, that's what made you decide to run for the Board of Education, and we're going to start with Mr. Freed this time. Mr. Freed?
That's a good question, because I've ran twice before and finished last both times. I figured tongue-in-cheek that I couldn't do any worse, so why not run again? But we've just always been involved. In school, my daughter will tell you if there was a task to be done, supplies, a party to be run, my wife and I were involved in it, and the PTA and their activities, the watchdog group, it's hard not to be involved when you have kids who are in the district, and when you have a community that cares. And so, I'll also tell you, not so tongue-in-cheek, that my daughter, when she saw the note in the school newsletter, said, "Hey, I'm going to run for the school board." She didn't realize you have to be, I think, 24-years-old at a minimum, or something like that, to run. And so, we came down, and on the way down with her, I said, "You know, if, if you're not eligible, then I'll run again, but you have to be my campaign manager." And so, my campaign manager is sitting over here, and we'll see how good a job she does as the election goes on.
Okay, Mr. Capria?
I decided to run, essentially, as always, the personal reason, because of us having a son in the district, but more importantly, because of the challenges coming down the pike for the Liberty School District. As Mr. Connor mentioned, they, they have a number of plans in place to address them. They are moving aggressively forward to address them. I've been very impressed with what I've learned, but I believe, obviously, we always need a common citizenry overlooking what's going on, and a healthy dose of common sense. It's the biggest consumer of our local tax dollars, so I believe that proper oversight is critical.
Mr. Connor?
What made me decide to run was really primarily my kids, and I think we're probably all in that boat together. A few years ago, I, I'll be honest with you, three years ago, things were kind of wild in our school district, and I didn't know what I was getting into when I first decided to do this, but I'm glad I did it. I had a, about 20-years corporate experience with American Century Investments and Aventis Pharmaceuticals, used to be Marion Labs, and the Federal Reserve System, and I had an MBA, and my wife and I decided at one point that she was going to continue on with her career, and I was going to take the non-traditional role of stay-at-home dad. So, my next thing became, how do I volunteer where I can kind of use that corporate background and use my MBA to help better the community and make, you know, make things better in the community? So, this is what I decided to do, and helping professionally manage this, this is a $120-million business, and it's, it's a challenge, it's challenging for me, but at the end of the day, you go home, you look in the mirror, and you know you're making a difference. When working for a pharmaceutical company or working for a financial services company, you're making positive differences, but not like you are here, and that's one thing I've always been jealous about with teachers. Teachers found a role that they play where they truly affect people's lives every day. Some days, it doesn't feel like that, I'm sure, but having, being just a small part of what's going on here has kind of drawn me back to that. So, that's, that's in a nutshell why I'm doing this.
And lastly, Mr. Rothman?
Thank you. Basically, I see this as an opportunity to further serve my community and to significantly increase my involvement that I've already enjoyed within the school district. You know, I have no personal agenda. I have no, I don't seek any personal gain from this. Even the campaign itself is like having a second full-time job, but it's one that I've tremendously enjoyed. I, I want to make a difference. I believe that my experience as an attorney, as a mediator, as a guardian ad litem for children, and as a parent are going to allow me to make significant contributions to the board, and I'm excited to be a part of what's happening. I've gone to board meetings now for several months. I've, may have missed one or two, but I've been at most of them, and I see what's going on. I've met with building leaders, I've met with administrators, I've met with several members of the current board, and I've done my homework, and I know where things stand, and I, I just want to get involved and, and dig right in.
Thank you. And the next question is, what qualities and skills do you have that would help you be an effective board member? Again, that's what qualities and skills do you have that would help you be an effective board member? And this time, we're going to start with Mr. Capria, Capria, sorry.
I have, well, as I mentioned, I'm self-employed as an appraiser and a real estate broker, and to be self-employed, you have to be a good manager across the wide spectrum, from bookkeeping to janitorial skills, IT, you name it. I have business experience. I used to work for Procter &amp; Gamble many moons ago. I was an Army officer before that, and so, I think I have a wide spectrum of experience. I have a Bachelor's of Science from West Point and a MSBA from Boston University, so sufficient, hopefully, educational background, and between the two combined, it will hopefully give me the wherewithal to at least know what we're looking at, dealing with, and move forward from there.
Mr. Connor?
Qualities and skills, in my mind, kind of fall into two categories, formal and informal. My formal education, formal background is, you know, I have a Bachelor's in Management in Information Technology Systems, MBA with an emphasis in finance from Rockhurst. I have experience with three different, very well-known, very well-respected Kansas City companies in people management, in, you know, hiring and firing employees, it's managing multimillion-dollar budgets, managing large projects, et cetera. But, you know, beyond that, to me, being a part, I've heard, other than I have, I've not heard it tonight, but I've heard people say, "Well, if I got on the board, I'd change this," or "I'd do this." No one person gets on the board and starts making decisions and changing things. You've got to be able to work with six other people. There are seven very diverse people that make up most school boards in Missouri, and there's a reason for that. You don't want seven of me running this district. I don't think you want seven of any one person making all the decisions. So, listening and a real willingness, a genuine interest in what other people's opinions are, where they're coming from on issues, being thoughtful about the decisions you're making, and then, when it's finally said and done, being able to move forward for the benefit of the district, whether it was your opinion or your decision that was ratified by the rest of the board or not. You might have been in the majority, you might have been in the minority, but regardless, at some point, you have to, as a board, come to consensus, not just agreement, but you have to come to consensus, realize this is the will of the board, and move on for the benefit of the district, teachers, and the kids and community we serve. So, I think that's the real intangible that you need to have to be an effective board member, is listening and working with, working with people.
Mr. Rothman?
Thank you. I think that the skill set that I have that is going to be different than many of the current board members is that I'm a trained mediator, and as a trained mediator, what I do is I help people discuss issues and help them reach decisions and agreements on their own. I am a consensus builder. That's what I do for a living. I am also self-employed, so I've had to run my own business. I've been out on my own as an attorney now for two and a half years, and the two and a half years I've spent out on my own have been more successful than the 10 years prior to that, when I was part of a larger group. As an attorney, as a guardian ad litem, I'm focused on kids, I'm focused on the family. The standard by which we make our decisions, and the judges make their decisions, is what's in the best interest of the children. So, that's what I do when I'm at work all day, is I focus on what's best for the children. Also, I think a lot of people think that because you're an attorney, you know all the laws, and I can tell you that most attorneys I know don't know all the laws, but what we do know, and what we are trained to do, is we know where to find the laws and how to apply the laws, and although Mr. Abbott is also an attorney on the board, he does insurance, defense, I do family law. I think it's going to work well together.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Freed?
Obviously, I'm not the youngest candidate here. So, one of the things I bring to the table is I moved a lot. I spent 26 years in the Navy, Navy Reserve, and I've seen a lot of school districts in my time. Some of them were very, very good, some of them were, were not so good. I've also had an opportunity, I presently serve as a digital analyst for Northrop Grumman Corporation, and we do war games for the US Army, so I like these Army guys, even though I'm a Navy guy. And I'll tell you the truth, it's a life and death situation. We're training brigade commanders to go out into the field and hopefully do a better job with their troops, so they don't lose troops. And in the past three years, we've had opportunities to train brigades who deployed to Afghanistan and didn't lose a single person. Now, I don't think the school district is life and death, and yet, it is vital. Young people that come from our schools are making decisions that are going to affect them the rest of their life, and I know sometimes people are shocked to discover that, as good as our school system is, we still have children who drop out of school. Some of them drop out of school because they're struggling to make grades. Some of them drop out of school because they're bored. I personally have a nephew dropped out of the Carney School District, who often is the smartest kid in the room. He's now a very successful businessman, but it's, it's not because of what the school did for him, it's what he was passionate about. I'm going to go back to that passion, that we need to do a better job of motivating our children to find what their passion is and then pursue a degree in that field, because, quite frankly, you can't go to work eight hours a day and be miserable and then go home and be happy, so you're much better off if you can find your life's work and then pour yourself into that.
Thank you, Mr. Freed. And the next question is, please explain your position on allowing citizens to have concealed firearms in schools. Again, that's please explain your position on allowing citizens to have concealed firearms in schools, and we're going to start back up with Mr. Connor.
Right now, and I don't know how many people are aware of this, we have something called SROs in our secondary schools. We have safety resource officers that are, the city's, City of Liberty helps us pay the salary for the three officers that we have on, on board right now. They are armed. They help us with drug situations and security and protection in the schools. I am very much for continuing that. However, I am not for allowing anyone with a concealed carry permit to walk into the schools with a gun. This is, I believe, being hotly debated in the legislature right now in Jeff City. It is a, it's pretty cut and dried for me, that about the last thing we need is, is weapons in the schools with anybody that has, I, I have a brother-in-law, he's going to shoot me for saying this, just got his concealed carry permit. He's an insurance agent, is out in the middle of nowhere a lot, and did it for his own protection, but I would not want him to walk into a school with a gun on him. I would not want me to walk into a school with a gun on me. The only people I think should be in our schools carrying weapons are those who are trained to do that, who are trained police officers, employees whose responsibility is to provide security, and that's where I would draw the line on that.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Now, Mr. Rothman?
Thank you. I agree with what Mr. Connor said. I believe that there are properly-trained individuals that are employed for that specific reason, to provide the security, and that's who should be the only people allowed to have any type of firearm on a school campus. This legislation that's pending, that was introduced the Tuesday following Sandy Hook back in December, to allow school faculty or staff, if they have their concealed carry, to bring the firearms in, it's, it's unnecessary, for one thing, because individual school districts can adopt their own policies already, so we don't need anyone in Jefferson City to, to give us this power. It's already there. If we feel like it's important enough, we can do it individually. If there's enough of a community outcry, we can dialogue about that. There may be some school districts around the state where it makes more sense, maybe when you're not in such a, an urban area with police protection. With respect to the school officials that I've met with, I would have to say that the administrators, principals, teachers, support staff uniformly believe it's a bad idea, too. So, I can't disagree with the opinions of the very people that would be directly affected by any type of decision to allow this.
Thank you. Mr. Freed?
I answered this question yes and no. My job takes me to Army bases all over the world, and when I'm in a room with this many people, almost every one of those people has a, a real automatic rifle, and they carry real ammunition. And I'm never afraid, because the amount of training that they get... And I'm never afraid, because the amount of training that they get makes them experts. It is extremely rare to have a, what they call an accidental discharge of a weapon in a brigade, and because they're well-trained. Now, that being said, I don't think someone who has the minimum amount of training to get their CCL should carry a gun in public. It's just not enough training. Would I have a problem with a former police officer carrying his gun to school because he's got a CCL? No, I wouldn't. I have a good friend who's an FBI agent. I would have no problem. He gets extensive training. So I think along these lines, I was an FBM. I spent a lot of time on missile boats that had nuclear weapons on them. And we had what was called the MAD Defense, Mutual Assured Destruction. And we came to realize that we didn't even need to have a missile in the tube. As long as we had the tube and the submarine, the deterrent was there. And I think that even if we, if the state passed this law and the school said no one's allowed, that would be a mistake. I think that the deterrent of there might be somebody in the school will cause a shooter to go to the next easier target. And, but anyone with a CCL, no. Trained people who are exceptionally trained, yes. And I think that would be up to the school to decide, and the school board.
Mr. Capria.
I believe it's an idea that has a lot of merit. It obviously should be properly reviewed and discussed to, to be implemented, but, and as I understand, the legislation in Jeff City is for school staff to carry concealed and carry weapon, not a civilian, so to speak. But even having said that, even a quote citizen parent coming on grounds, they are permitted to do that if they have the permit in the general population. Necessarily going on school grounds should not arbitrarily take that away. Sadly, though, the school district already has appreciable security measures in place, it could, heaven forbid, in the situation with a armed person out to do ill-will on school grounds, it could be the quickest and the most effective defense even, I mean, obviously like Sandy Hook where a matter of seconds could have saved lives. So I, I won't definitively say yes, but I think it, it deserves serious consideration and discussion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Capria. The next question is, can you explain how will challenges students of different academic levels, especially with increasing class sizes? Can you explain how you will challenge students of different academic levels, especially with increasing class sizes? And we're going to start with Mr. Rothman.
The teachers of our district are exceptional, and they can handle what is thrown at them. I think they look at the challenges that the district has with respect to the 3% growth that we see, with respect to the, the financial situation of the district. I think they look at that as a challenge rather than an obstacle. And I don't see that changing as long as we continue to take good care of our teachers and our administrators and our staff. We don't want the top-notch educators that we have to leave our district for other districts simply because they see the opportunity for a higher salary. So I think as long as we are taking care of our own and as long as we can make choices with the tax dollars that make the most sense, we're putting the dollars to the best use, we're using the facilities that we do have, we're going to be able to continue to provide the same level of excellent education for the children.
Mr. Freed.
That's a great question. I've had the opportunity, because I have three older children, to have five children go through first grade. And I spoke to several first-grade parents in the last month, and one thing has not changed over the last 20 years. The average first-grade class has four or five children in it who can already read at a third-grade level, who can count to 100, who can write their name. And it has five children who can't recognize one letter of the alphabet, who can't count to 10, who cannot write their name. That's a gap of about five or six years in the first grade. What's amazing, and our school district does a good job of this, is how narrow that gap becomes at the 12th grade. And yet, there's still a gap. That is a huge challenge. And I've had parents tell me, their first-grade teacher said, "I won't be spending a lot of time with Suzie because I'm going to spend most of my time with the children who can't read yet, who can't count yet." And that's just the way it is. I would like to see us as a school district fight for more of this Head Start money that is wasted on pre-kindergarten education, doesn't seem to be very effective at all, because we do a better job as a school district and as, as teachers. And teachers who are passionate about what they do, we do a much better job than the government does with the job program they call Head Start. So I wish we had more time to talk about that.
Mr. Capria.
I think from what I've learned about the various projects the school district has being implemented or looked at right now, reference Flex Space where they plan to utilize more fully the physical area of the school buildings. It's got, you correctly said, it's Leeds Program.
Leeds.
Leeds, which as I understand is a technological initiative. I think their ideologies are very well-suited to address that question as far as being flexible to address different needs of different level students and actually do it in a very cost-effective manner, so long as properly implemented.
Thank you. And Mr. Connor.
Well, I don't want to overkill on how many kids I have, but I do have six, and they're all very diverse. I've got three, three of my six are very good students. They're pretty much kind of A students without a lot of effort. My other three are not. One kind of gave up and just liked to party and have a good time in school. One of them worked very hard for every grade she got, just finished her RN, very proud of her. And then I've got another one in special education. So I've got a very diverse group of kids in my own house and, and see this through a, through kind of a unique lens. I think we seriously need to look at, right now, we are using an 1880s model for moving kids through the system. If you happen to be born in the same year or the same 12-month timeframe, you're kind of stuck with that group of kids through the entire system until you're then moved into college and you move on into your career. I think we really seriously need to start looking at those cohorts or these groups moving through the system at different speeds and not necessarily based on just age. This is something we're starting to explore a little bit right now. There is a book called Inevitable that the school board is doing a book study on, that leaders in the school are doing a book study on, and it talks about changing that model from just moving through the assembly line to actually moving at the speed that your child requires. I think it's doable. It's not easy. I can't explain every detail of it to you right now, but changing a little bit the way we move kids through the system is something we seriously need to look at, and we've started looking at a little bit here in Liberty.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Connor. And the next question is, what school buildings have you visited or what administrators or classroom teachers have you talked to in an effort to learn about district initiatives? What have these conversations taught you about the direction LPS is headed? Again, what school buildings have you visited or what administrators or classroom teachers have you talked to in an effort to learn about district initiatives? What have these conversations taught you about the direction LPS is headed? And we're going to start with Mr. Freed.
In the last 30 days I've been in the high school, I've been in the middle school. I have spoken to, I don't know if I could quantify how many teachers, but more than a dozen. I spoke at great length with Dr. Adams at the high school, and I had some opportunities to speak with Tim Baldwin, the debate coach, and actually spent quite a bit of time at the Liberty School Debate Judging Events, which was, if you haven't done it, you need to go do that. I'll give you guys a free plug for that. It is the most fun you'll have, you know, a long, hard-working day. I didn't specifically talk about a lot of challenges. I wanted to talk about, you know, how things are going, what direction do you see. I did talk a little bit about the dropout rate with Dr. Adams, and that tapping thing just annoys me. I don't know what all the other candidates are doing, doing with it, but, so, let me go back to, look at the original question. So, yeah, I talked to probably a dozen teachers, and I talked to Dr. Adams, and I've been in two, at two of the, I think, three schools, actually. I was also at Ridgeview for a visit, so.
Okay, Mr. Capria.
Honestly, I've not done, I would call that more of a grassroots, on-the-ground kind of informational gathering. I have been to Liberty Oaks, obviously, where my son attends, and through nephews and other activities, I've been to Liberty North and Liberty High School. And, but both, in all three, it was strictly for school and/or extracurricular activities. It was not anything to do with school board-related research. I've been more focused on the top end, trying to grasp the tremendous amount of activities that the school board oversees, its budget, initiatives underway. I've not done extensive research at what the teachers and whatnot are thinking and administration.
Mr. Connor.
Well, I've been, I've been in every building, you know, having been on the board, that's, I kind of cheat, I guess, in that I've been in every building over the last several months, and just this year, I think every building, but maybe two. What I think people understand is this, I think, you know, I want to say just a couple words about Dr. John Jungman. This is a young man that we hired in as our deputy superintendent, and he is taking over as superintendent on July 1st of this year. He has a very clear direction on where he would like to see this district headed. He has done a, many state-of-the-district presentations to staff. I was just at one about four hours ago, to staff the different schools, and he was there as well. And I think what everybody appreciates is that they understand where we sit with regard to revenue, expenses, et cetera. The big question, I think, on the staff's mind is, okay, where do we go from here? We know things are going to have to change a little bit in the way we've done business in the past. Exactly what's that going to look like? And the unfortunate answer is, we can't tell everybody exactly how it's going to affect them, but we do know that we have, we have a great staff, you know, and that's, that can't be overstated. Our test scores, our ACT test scores are at an all-time high right now. In the history of Liberty Public Schools, right now, our ACT test scores are at an all-time high. Our finances are under control, we have work to do, and changes are coming in order to help us, help us manage that. The big question to be answered now is exactly what happens from this point on, from the process of doing that. And there's some other questions, which are going to address this before I run out of room, so I'll save that till later, but I think what I've learned, bottom line from staff, is that the real, next question is, where are we going from here and exactly how's it going to affect me? And that's, we're working on that, because things are going to change a little bit.
Mr. Rothman.
Thank you. You know, over the course of my kids' careers as students in Liberty, I've, I've managed to be in every building except for one elementary. But specifically for this campaign, last November, I made a commitment that I was going to attempt to visit each school, speak to each principal, and so far, I have made it to both the high schools, both the junior high schools, Liberty Middle School. I was at South Valley Middle School earlier today for Dr. Jungman's State-of-the-District address, and I have an appointment to meet with their school principal here in about a week and a half. I have been to meet with all except for three of the elementary principals since November. And this is a process I started even before the Thanksgiving break. I just felt like, in order to be the most informed, to see if this is something that, that I truly wanted to devote myself to, because the board members, they don't do this for fame or fortune. They do this because they care about the district, and I wanted to make sure that I felt like I could make a difference. I have also met with Mr. Brewer, I've met with Dr. Jungman one-on-one, and Carol Embry was kind enough to take most of an afternoon with me to give me an education on the budget of the district. So I feel like I've, I've done my homework. Everyone's excited about the direction the district's headed right now. I mean, Mr. Connor has mentioned a few specifics. Of course, we've got challenges with growth and finances, but I think we've got the right people that look at everything as an opportunity rather than an insurmountable obstacle.
Thank you. And the next question is, what do you think the educational priorities should be for the Liberty Public Schools? What do you think the educational priorities should be for the Liberty Public Schools? And we're going to start with Mr. Capria.
I think, given our current day and age, obviously, moving aggressively into more technol- technological-driven studies is not paramount, but very important. And then to be the opposite of that, if you will, and I've learned this or come aware of it from visiting with various meetings, and that not forgetting the classics and the arts, if you will, to keep the education both focused on job skills, but also ensuring it's broad, broad enough to develop well-rounded students that can progress, graduate, go out into the world, and hopefully succeed at anything they do.
Mr. Connor.
That's kind of a broad question, and I guess it would be too easy to just say academics. But, you know, when you look at kind of three major areas of our offerings, you've got fine arts, academics, there's a lot going on in athletics and some of the extracurriculars, but academics is obviously at the top. More specifically, I think we have to do a better job, and we have strategies in place right now to do this, we're actually moving in this direction, specifically related to real-world business needs. What are our kids going to need when they graduate and go into the, into the business world? What are companies looking for out there? It's more than reading, math, and science, it's specific skills required by discerners of the world, or American Century, or Hallmark, et cetera. There is a program in Blue Valley right now called the CAPS Program, and it, right this second, I can't remember what CAPS stands for, but Career Advance Placement, something. We are looking at a program like the CAPS Program in Blue Valley to do north of the river in conjunction, to work with North Kansas City, Park Hill, Carney, Excelsior Springs, and a lot of discussion has started and happening around this idea. Colleen Jones, who is currently the Assistant Superintendent for Academic Services, is moving into a role where she will focus solely on relationships within the community, on colleges, and on things like this. So it's easy to say academics, but we've got to do a better job of focusing, preparing kids for the actual workplace and working with businesses to make that happen. That was two, right? Not three. So to delve into this just a tad bit more, what we see is companies like Cerner and Hallmark, et cetera, bringing their employees into this place, having our kids go off-campus somewhere, and actually working on real-life, real-world projects with companies in the area. We just had a very good, Jeff Watson in the audience, we just had a very good medical careers night with the hospital. So more of those relationships and preparing kids for what's actually expected in the real world is where we're headed.
Mr. Rothman.
Thank you. Of course, we have to keep focus on the basics of, you know, with Common Core, we've got to take a look at where our commarts are and where our sciences and where our math is. And we can do, we are a good district in those areas, but we can continue to do better. I think if you've had the opportunity to take a look at Dr. Jungman's presentation, either live, or I think there's going to be, there was a video of it made earlier today that I think is going to be available, and I would encourage you to take a look at that. And what it did basically is it compared us to peer districts rather than just metro-area districts, for example. And this includes four districts from over on the St. Louis side. And when we measure up to these peer districts, we're good, but maybe not as good as we think we were, and we certainly have room for improvement, and we can become great. And that's going to take, you know, the continued focus on, on your, your core subjects, but at the same time, we've got to implement more technology into the classroom. We can't have our kids, I'm sure they're at home using laptops and iPads, and they're on their smartphones, we can't expect them at 8:00 to shut it off and then at 4:00 to turn it back on. I mean, we need to use these things as instruments for education, too. There's no, there's no reason to expect, I mean, my kids have this ability in fifth and second grade to do things with PowerPoint stuff that I can't even do now, that it just blows me away, and we can't expect them to just learn that on their own after school. If we start utilizing that in the classroom, then I think we're going to have better-prepared students to go out into the community upon their graduation.
Mr. Freed.
I had to smile as you were speaking. If I have a problem with my smartphone, I ask my daughter, and she fixes it for me. If I have a problem with my smartphone, I ask my daughter, and she fixes it for me. I'm going to pose a question to you. Why doesn't McDonald's take $100 bills? Does anyone know? You might think it's because there are a lot of counterfeit $100 bills out there. The actual reason is, in a study, McDonald's discovered that our kids have become so enamored to the calculator that if they accidentally plug in a hundred instead of 10, and your bill was $8.40, they will count you out $92 in change. And so to get out of that, they just don't take $100 bills. And that is, you know, it blows my mind that that continues to be a problem in our workspace because you would think, anybody can count to a hundred, we're scoring as high as we can on SAT and ACT tests. And yet, here's a major corporation who made a worldwide decision based on the fact that the people they hire, who are mostly teenagers, really can't count change to $100. And I think that's sad. On the other hand, I think we need a lot more technology in our classrooms. We need to somehow make it more fun again. As I think about my educational experiences, the best teachers I had anywhere were the ones who made it not only challenging but fun. And I wrote in my article for the Dispatch that it's really sad when you have a daughter who loved to go to school in the first and second and third grade, who was, you know, what time is it, can I go to school? I love school. Who gets higher up in school and goes, "I really hate this class. It's boring." Well, kids who are bored don't do well in school. We need to find a way to un-bored them.
Thank you, Mr. Freed. The next question is, what qualities do you believe make a, make an ideal board member? What qualities do you believe make an ideal board member? And we're going to start with Mr. Connor.
Well, I think I may be repeating myself from an earlier question, but in addition to the hard skills, just being knowledgeable and having some, some education, being able to manage budgets, you really have to, the ideal board member really needs to be able to work with six other people. I think that's quality one. It's not about coming in and trying to shove ideas down six other people's throats or tell administrators what to do, et cetera. It's about truly listening to other people's ideas, where they're coming from, and, and once a decision is made, being able to move forward with that group onto the next subject. So I, I think listening and working with people are tied for number one.
Mr. Ruffman?
Thank you. I think that in addition to those, your capacity and your interest level to stay informed, participate in the process, do the research, attend the meetings, meet with those within the district that are directly affected by, you know, the policies and procedures that board members can sit around and talk about, but we need to be out there and we need to meet with the people that it directly impacts. And in addition to dialoguing with members of the community and make sure that questions are answered, there may be decisions that are made by the board that are just completely puzzling to the public and, and to the, to the administrators or to the teachers. We need to give everyone an opportunity to gain access to that information and be willing to share that information and be open about that information. We need to be sure to make decisions that are fiscally sound as well as designed to promote the education that the children need.
Mr. Freed?
The ideal board member. I personally think you see four of them in front of you today. Okay. I agree with everything that's been said so far. Seeking consensus is important. I really appreciate the fact that our school board and Dr. Jungman have looked at, at the book Inevitable and are looking at, you know, maybe it's time to throw away our 1880 age-grade-based model of education. But I think beyond just consensus, you need someone on the board who's not afraid to ask the hard questions, who's not afraid to think out of the box and say, wait a minute, why is, why are we doing it that way? Is it because that's the way we've always done it? Or are we doing it that way because that's really the best way to do it? And I'll be frank with you, in the last nine or 10 years, I've heard a lot of teachers and administrators say, well, that's just the way we do it. And I want to go, oh, wait a minute. That's a terrible answer. Tell me that this is the best way, or tell me that recent research has shown, but don't tell me that's the way we've always done it and so we're going to continue to do it that way. So I like the idea, Scott, that we're at least thinking about a different model. I also think consensus is important. I think you need a rabble-rouser who's willing to ask the hard questions, but I think you also need someone who's willing to, as a group, sit down, do the research, and then come out with a consensus opinion. One of the things that we do in, in my job is, we have some knock-down, drag-out, behind-the-wall meetings. But when we come back out to the troops, you would think that we were all unanimous in our decision and arguing because, here's what we're going to do, let's go do it. And so I think that it's important to hash it out in private, look at all the possibilities, and then come out with an idea that is our idea.
And Mr. Capria?
Well, at the risk of sounding like a broken record, I would repeat everything the other three gentlemen have said. Obviously, a broad educational background, hopefully world and business experience so that you can grasp what it is you're looking at, and a good dosage of common sense, particularly, as I mentioned earlier, given the amount of resources that the school district consumes. And then perhaps something that wasn't mentioned, but there's an old adage in the military that anything not inspected is neglected. So to translate that a different way, follow-up. Once we decide we're going to do this, hopefully achieve or arrive at by consensus, the follow-through to ensure it is accomplished and done the way we thought it was going to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Capria. And we're reaching about eight o'clock now, so we're going to start to wrap it up with summaries, and we're going to start with Mr. Ruffman.
All right, thank you. You know, like I said before, I've got the passion to serve on the board. I believe that I can work well with the other members of the board. I can be a consensus builder. And again, I have no issues with someone who wants to speak their mind and somebody who wants to ask the hard questions, and in fact, believe that I would be asking many of those hard questions. But then, once the board has ruled or voted on something, you follow the will of the board. You don't take it to the papers. You don't actively campaign against things that the board has decided to pursue. I think that we need to continue to look at the way our facilities and staffing and technology are utilized, as is being done by the Vision 2020 team. You know, we need to look at the, the traditional model of building another school every few years. It's just not sustainable anymore. We hit certain levels with students at the elementary and we, and we build another building. We just can't do that anymore. We can build the buildings, as you'll see with Dr. Jungman's presentation, that's not all that expensive. It's what we do with them once they're built. We can't heat them, air-condition them, staff them, another cafeteria, another library. The funds just aren't there to do that. We would run out of money and not be able to provide an education for the kids. So we need to begin to look at the, we need to continue to look at the usage of the existing buildings to make sure that it's optimized, make sure that technology is an integral part of learning. There's going to be ways that technology can be used as even the class sizes grow so that the same level of education can be provided by the same amount of staff that we have without having to add a bunch of new teachers just because we have 3% growth every year. I mean, the bottom line is, I'm sure this was important enough for all of you to come out here, it was important for all of us to file, that we want the students to leave Liberty Schools prepared for the future and able to be valuable members of society.
Mr. Freed?
Well, to summarize, I agree with all the gentlemen. It's going to be a hard decision, I think, for the voters. Because in the Liberty Public Schools, we always have excellent candidates who are well-qualified and who are passionate about what they want to do. And we would do well electing any of these board members. So why me? First of all, I think, because I have more experience. I'm older, obviously, than these guys. Ronald Reagan once said, when he was asked about his age, he wasn't going to hold the youth and inexperience of his opponent against them. And that was a joke, you guys didn't get that at all. But I think that we will do well, no matter who is elected, because our, our board, our staff, our leaders have a vision for where we're headed. And I think it's just important that our community be aware of it and that people like me get involved in it. And so I'm obviously running for school.
Mr. Capria?
In summary, I again fully concur across the board, pretty much. We are an excellent school district, is going in the right direction. I've been overwhelmed by the number of initiatives and programs that are being looked at and/or already underway. But again, it needs proper supervision, and there will be challenges down the road that will need consensus building, decision-making. And as a particular pet project of mine, if you will, I've, particularly through organizations like the PTA, I think we could actually move to involve the community at large more in the educational process. As far as volunteerism, be it music, athletics, whatever, we still have pretty much, despite all the initiatives and whatnot underway, kids go to school and they come home, sports and whatnot aside. I don't think that has to necessarily be the end of the day, so to speak. If you have skills or anything that you could contribute and there's interest, let's, let's try to marry them up, bring them together. Thank you. Thank you, Dylan, Dorothy, and the young lady on the gavel, you've been heck on that.
And finally, Mr. Connor.
As I mentioned earlier, I'm, I'm very bullish on the school district. I'm in a position, I could send my kids to private school, send them to Rockhurst or send them to Pembroke or wherever, but I don't want them there, I want them here. And after being part of this system, part of this organization for three years, and kind of seeing it from the inside out, as it were, this is where I want to be. This is where I want my family to be, this is where I want my kids to grow up. There are so many good things going on right now. We have a very young, dynamic leader coming in to take over the superintendency on July 1st. As I've mentioned before, our test scores are at an all-time high in the history of this district. Our finances are in order. We just received, right behind Andy here, is the first national accreditation that we received from Advanced Ed this past year. So things are going well. However, it's not time to sit back, sit on our hands, and kind of ride the wave. Now's the time to take it up another notch. We have the right people on staff, the right people in our teacher groups. We have a gentleman tonight in this room who's been the national, or the state teacher of the year twice in the state of Missouri. He's on our staff. I'm not going to mention your name, Eric, but I don't want to embarrass you. Just this year, the National, the social studies, social studies or history, I'm not sure which, teacher of the year in the state of Missouri. So we have, and he is one of several in this, in this situation. We need to take advantage of where we're at and, and move forward in the areas of additional efficiencies and innovating in the classroom. Some of that will be through the use of technology. Technology is not the silver bullet, but it is an enabler to help teachers be more effective, to help kids learn, and also to bring business more into our academic services and partner with the real world out there a little bit more than we have in the past. So like I said, I think, I think things are going very well, but we're going to take it up a notch over the next three years is, would be my goal.
Well, that concludes our event. I do like to keep it to an hour. We did have a lot of good questions from the community, and I urge you, if you have a question that was not answered tonight, to please ask the candidates. They are here to serve you. Make sure you go and vote. Who, the next two people who will make part of the board that will govern our school district is up to you. And I do want to thank Dylan for coming out tonight, and the timekeeper gavel knocker was Megan Gardner. She jumped in at the last minute and helped me out. So have a good evening and thank you for attending.